Special public meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education for May 14th will now come to order. I ask that you please turn off any cell phones that you may have, or put them on vibrate, so that they are not part of our recorded meeting. At this time, Mr. Tharney, would you please lead us in the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Gorski, roll call, please.
Mr. Braverman.
Here.
Ms. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman. Mrs. Koloponovich.
Here.
Mr. Nostine.
Here.
Mr. Poy.
Here.
Mr. Prezioso.
Present.
Mr. Ryback.
Here.
Mr. Zarneski.
Here.
Mr. Board President, you have a quorum present this evening. Ms. Arminio is noted as present. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May 8th, 2015, at all schools, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Gorski. At this time, we will open the floor for the public forum. Please keep in mind that any comments made during this forum must deal with items on the agenda. If you want to speak, please come to the microphone, giving your name and address. You are allowed three minutes for any comments or statements that you have to make. All comments and questions are to be directed to the presiding officer. And each speaker should speak only once on the same topic. Your cooperation in abiding by these regulations will be appreciated. So at this time, the floor is now open for the public forum. Anyone wishing to speak, please come to the microphone. Okay, seeing no one, then we will close the first public forum, and we will now enter into the board discussion of the one-to-one instructional initiative. But prior to any other board member speaking, I would like to clarify both to the board as well as the public, the reason why this particular item is being discussed in the special meeting of tonight. Last week, I did not feel it was appropriate to include that on the agenda. We did have a meeting last week because some of our board members would not be present. And I agreed with one of the board members saying that they felt that all members should be present for this particular discussion. And then again, last night, we had a situation where all of the board members could not be present. So I -- and I knew that in advance, and so I chose to not have this item dealt with at that time for that reason. So it was scheduled for a special meeting for tonight, not to remove it from our regular meeting, but for the purposes of having all members present. Mr. Kaufman is not here tonight because this is a matter in which I believe he is conflicted, and therefore, his presence is noted and for that reason. So we have all of the people that can vote on this particular item, they are present tonight, and that is why the meeting is occurring tonight. So at this time, the board will now discuss, bring up any questions or comments that you might have. You have received quite a bit of information from our administration since this item first came up some time ago. You've had the opportunity to read answers to many of those questions, and also then to pursue additional questions on your own to the administration. And I suggested that you direct those questions directly to the administration and not to me, because I would not necessarily have the answers. So I think you've had adequate opportunity to explore this, and I'm not quite sure exactly what else may be asked tonight, but this is the opportunity to ask or to comment on Anyone?
Thank you. Well, I guess I'll start, and hopefully, we'll pick up the pace after that. In thinking hard and fast about this, the first thing I want to do, you know, it's very easy to say what we should do better, but I'd like to start with what we're doing right, and that's educating our students. The results are evident, and I certainly compliment the teaching staff, our students, parents, and this Board of Education for providing the tools and means for our students to get outstanding education. That being said, this is a big-ticket item, and I know all of us have been laboring over this, over this, this is the second meeting on this, and it's not easy for any one of us, because we are concerned about the education and the cost. This is expensive, so I have, I'm going to ask you to bear with me, I have some thoughts, even though I wrote down, because I didn't want to forget anything. I'd like to start out with discussing about spare units. In the question-answer packet that we all received as board members, it noted that the teacher iPads do not need replacing. So after speaking with Mr. Washington, getting his opinion on how many spare units he feels we need, I'm suggesting that we consider ordering 2,200 units. I think that's reflected in the agenda today, in the motion, rather, that we're going to consider. And I'd like to thank Ms. Gorski, Dr. Alvich, and Reggie Washington, and of course Dennis, for always being available to me for my badgering on a weekly basis, and, but I know you understand where we're coming from, and we have to resolve this on our own minds. Another key factor is the timing for these discussions. As a former school administrator, I understand the importance of getting orders in on time, especially at this juncture in the school year. You know, the school year is busy enough, but the beginning and the end are the most busy, and, you know, making decisions that affect the beginning or the end of a school year, or impact it in any way, in negative fashion, is, to me, something that we just have to do everything to avoid. However, the discussions at the board level that we've been having on this issue, in some way, have to begin earlier. I know some of you may feel we've started it early enough, but I think we need to discuss this as an entire board, because the last time we discussed this, there were questions raised that didn't come up in committee, and I think that we need to have the advantage of sitting down together and listening to a presentation or discussing it, especially with a big-ticket item. I'm not faulting anybody. I just think it just happened that way. But we owe it to our students and taxpayers to begin the discussions on big-ticket items well in advance of crunch time. Lastly, my last comment is, and I think you received something, that I had written and presented for your consideration today, but I'd like to explain it first. I think that, you know, we started with Apple, and let me say, in January, when I first came on board, as I was leaving, a teacher came up to me after the technology fair and said to me, "Mr. Ryback, please let us have, vote for having our iPads again. It took me a while to get used to it, and I'm using it effectively now, and switching now would be difficult for me." And, you know, what the teachers are saying, what the high school principal says is very important, because they're the ones that are using it, they're the ones that are doing it. We're not, they are. And we have to respect how they feel and listen to them as far as results. There are many other options out there. I know personally, myself, I like Chromebooks, but according to the teachers, they don't meet the needs of this school, and that's important. But I see something that we're doing, I think, that's boxing us in, for lack of a better expression, into only using Apple products. I think the professional development that we have is geared toward Apple. So of course, on Apple's side, it's a little bit self-serving. I think that we would stand better if we varied our professional development, so that teachers, staff members, could get a good working knowledge of some other apps or some other platforms, so that if we make a decision in the future to change a platform, go to a different machine, it wouldn't be catastrophic, they wouldn't be so nervous about it, because they will have had some experience with it. I think that's a very key factor. So that being said, I'd like to raise the following motion, if I may, Mr. President. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the creation of in-house professional development technology opportunities, which are varied rather than platform-specific, so as to better enable staff members in the district to develop technology skills that will be adaptable to a variety of different technology devices in the future.
Okay, is there a, is there a seconding of that motion?
I'll second.
Ms. Arminio? All right. So we have the motion. This deals specifically with in-house professional development.
Yes.
Okay? And nothing else? And essentially, generally, it is that there would be a more general type of professional development, not specifically geared to Apple, but to infusing technology, so that somewhere down the road, if we wanted to get off of Apple, it would not be so difficult.
Right.
That's the way I'm understanding it. Is that correct?
Yes, and also, it should be at no additional cost. I discussed this with Dr. Alvich and Reggie Washington, and it's basically, and correct me, Dori, if I'm wrong, we're basically showing them different apps that are available, and we have a Windows technology right here, so that if we do need a different type of platform, it's available to demonstrate with the staff. It's my hope that this would, again, begin and be reinforced, so that down the road, two years from now, two and a half years from now, the teachers would really feel comfortable making a switch if need be, because we do have to start saving money.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. My question to Dori is, how do you see, logistically, how do you see this working in the professional development?
Our professional development is very differentiated and diversified as it is. Within the package from Apple, we do have Apple workshops that will, so Apple, we will continue with those, that's in the package. But for other opportunities, we can look at other presenters coming in to present, just basically on technology use in the classroom, rather than Apple products in the classroom. We can also include all of those different pieces in any of our workshops we do. One of our teachers currently at the high school is teaching a flipped classroom, year-long course, and it's already filled to capacity for next year. She's a teacher at the high school, however, the people in her class are K-12 teachers. So only the high school teachers have the Apple products, the K-8 teachers have the Windows products. So she's already having to diversify and differentiate within her classroom to begin with. So we do have those opportunities available within the district. So to make sure that we're putting a focus on that, it will take a little bit of work, but I don't think it will be a difficult task to do.
And you don't think it'll put a huge pressure on, you know, PD time and everything like that? You think it'll be feasible?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this? Mr. Zarneski?
Something like this, as far as a new procedure or a platform being looked at, as far as the curriculum committee, and then maybe the finance committee, to see if there's any more interest in this, where it can be expanded, and then to the finance committee, as far as if we have to go out and bring people in, the teachers, PD, I mean, that's a cost in itself.
We have, we do already have in the budget some money for outside presenters to come in. So that's already something in the budget, that's in my professional development budget. We offer so many different courses throughout the year, most of them done by teachers within our district, so it would be offering those trainers more professional development, and we can use Reggie's office and the tech, and the tech department, and the new technology facilitator, to help in-service those presenters that we already have in our district, so that whenever they present anything with technology, they present multiple platforms in their classes. So that wouldn't be an extra charge, that would be something we're already doing in-house with professional development. We have over 130 teachers currently trained as trainers in our district, and they're the ones that run all of the year-long courses throughout the year during in-services. They also run mini-courses throughout the year, and all of that has been in our budget. So it's, it may not be, it's not going to be fully just new technology PD courses, but whenever technology is incorporated into our professional development courses, we want to make sure that there's a focus on how the technology is used, not on the specific platform being used.
Ms. Koloponovich?
Is this a recommendation that's coming out of a committee, or because of a board member? And I think that's what Mr. Zarneski's trying to say.
I don't think it came, it did not come out of the committees.
This didn't go through the committee, and I thought we worked as a board of committees, and not as a board of a whole. So something new like this should really be brought to the committee level for discussion.
Make a motion.
Well, I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm just saying that because every, we can't have every, 10 board members making 10 different recommendations every time we have a meeting. That's why we are a board of a committee, some, something that's recommend, and I'm not saying this is a good or a bad recommendation, I'm just saying if it's coming from a board member to an administrator, or to anybody, to the board president, it should really go on an agenda for a committee discussion, and a recommendation coming from a committee, because that's how we work on this Board of Education.
Okay, and my perception may be wrong, but I recall, I believe, that it was, it first went to curriculum, the iPad initiative and what to do about that, and then curriculum, from curriculum, it went to finance. And if I'm not mistaken, finance had recommended that the matter of the iPad and the one-to-one initiative be brought to the full board for discussion. So that's why I, I see that this.
But this is not.
That's not what we're talking about here.
Yeah, we're not talking about the iPad, we're talking about, um...
Point of order, I think we should go take up time and some speed here.
All right, well, Ms. Koloponovich, go ahead.
We are not talking about the iPad one-on-one initiative, we're talking about developing a technology, an in-house professional development technology opportunity, which I know never came to finance.
All right. Ms. Arminio?
I understand your position, but we do have a full board here, and I think it is acceptable by Robert's rules for any, any assembly to, that any member can bring a resolution, so it would require a vote yes or no. If it, if it, if it doesn't pass, then perhaps it can go into committee, but I believe that any board member can bring a resolution up, and it's open for discussion and a vote. I could be wrong.
Mr. Ryback?
If I'm not mistaken, Dr. Alvich, didn't this, in a way, come up in the curriculum committee when we, you're talking about?
It was mentioned during the curriculum committee presentation.
So there was some discussion in the curriculum committee on it, I know. That's what got me thinking. Thank you.
But, but there...
Yes.
There was no recommendation on this coming, or was there a recommendation?
There was no recommendation out of the committee, it was a discussion during the committee discussion during the presentation.
Well, I, my, once again, I'm going to give you my perspective on it, because of, we will be voting on a resolution tonight that includes the possible purchase of iPads and MacBooks, and I believe part of that contract or purchase involves professional development being offered by Apple. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I, I, I don't see this as being something that's totally separate from what we, from what we are here for tonight, because we're approving a total package, or not approving it, one way or the other, with Apple, and I think what Mr. Ryback is simply doing is saying that we don't want to lock ourselves in forever to Apple. He wants to see professional development being a little bit more diverse and more inclusive of, so that a shift to a different platform at some point in the future is possible. Ms. Arminio?
Yeah, and I think part of the discussion, all along with the recommendations from Technology Department, and also from Dr. Alvich, is, one of the arguments is that the teachers are, have been trained on Apple, and it's difficult to change at this point. So I think it's actually pertinent to the overall discussion, because, again, one of the arguments is that we've already been through this series of training, and we can't really change now, because we're sort of stuck, or if you want to use a different word, going forward with this technology because of the professional development. If we have diverse professional development, as we like to have diversity of teaching in the classroom, if we have diverse development for our professionals, that would give us an opportunity to broaden our choices in the future. I think it's a good idea. I mean, whether, whether this, this other resolution for the iPad passes or not, I can't see why, and I may be using the word wrong, but I keep hearing differential educate, differentiate. I mean, it would be good to have our teachers having diversified exposure to different technologies, because there is, and I think Mr. Washington aptly put it, we're not really sure what's going to happen in the future, what would be the better, and actually, Dr. Alvich, let me give you credit as well, I think you agreed with that, that we are not sure going forward what the opportunities for educational technology will be. So if we start early and expose teachers to the differences, maybe we will actually find that there are technology, educational technologies that suit our students' needs better. So, I mean, I think this is sort of part and parcel of it, but we, thank you.
Mr. Gorski?
Thank you. In the administrative deliberation on this one-to-one initiative, there were differences of opinions on the platform. And as Mr. Ryback mentioned, one of the limitations was teacher training, and the amount of time going into next year. So an administrator actually brought this resolution in forth, not as articulated as you, Mr. Ryback, but, but in a similar fashion, to differentiate the professional development, to allow an ambidextrous approach to considerations of new platforms going forward, because as this process has showed us, this was rather difficult to consider switching to a different platform at this stage, because of the important piece of the teacher training, as that's so integrally involved in instruction.
Mr. Nostine?
So often, we always speak about, you know, being proactive and everything, and, you know, looking more towards the future. I feel that this, this resolution by Mr. Ryback is in that direction. Obviously, we're not happy with the idea that we're locked into one platform, as you say. There's definitely significant cost advantages with having the flexibility of saying we're going to go to a different platform, just from the vendor standpoint, where they know that they have to compete for our business, as opposed to us being locked in. I think that's an important piece of the puzzle, and I think by this resolution, not the resolution, but this, this, I guess, a resolution, that Mr. Ryback that we're speaking to now, I think that's why that is a, an important part of that puzzle piece, to make sure going forward that we're not locked in, that we do have some comfort level with other platforms. So I think that this is a good thing.
May I recommend to the board also, is that as a new superintendent comes on board, that this becomes either a district or Board of Education goal.
Okay, anyone else have comments? Mr. Braverman?
I happen to agree with Anthony. There's a point of order that we're missing. We're here to talk about this resolution and the adoption of, or not adopting, the iPads. I think we should take that up, and after that, I would like to amend what Steve was saying, in that we should have an ongoing committee to evaluate what we're doing and what we might be able to do. We keep talking about being, having a one-to-one process here in the district, and I think we, most of us agree to, agree with that. But at the same time, I think we should look beyond the high school. I'm sure all of us know somebody that's in college, and every one of them that I know has been asked to bring a specific computer to that school. I haven't heard us talk about that at all. Should we be preparing kids beyond the high school? And in terms of a variety of computers, my God, there's probably as many computers as there are teachers, they all have one. They all have two in the school, they have an iPad, and I think they have a laptop, no? They, no, but they do have others in school. Not at all? I used to. At any rate, I think we should take that up after, after the board makes a decision on the, on the iPads. And then we can go home.
There's a motion on the floor, though, correct? I mean, we have, we have to address the motion on the floor.
We're presently discussing this motion that Mr. Ryback has made. You have, you're, you were suggesting an amendment, though, Mr. Braverman, could you clarify exactly what that amendment was?
I was, I would amend it to include, to include an ongoing study of how we use the iPads, and what, how we use computers in the district, and what, what needs the students have beyond high school. You know, speaking from, just getting off the cuff for a minute, speaking from a personal point of view, I have a grandson that's in engineering, he uses an iPad, he uses a laptop, and very often, he prefers notes with pen and pencil, so. And, and...
I'm sorry? The amendment? And we have to do, okay?
Have one more comment. The current literature on, on computers in the schools indicates that they should be used as supplemental material.
Okay, so Mr. Gorski, who is basically our parliamentarian, says that since we do have an amendment that has been suggested, we have to see if that amendment is going to be seconded. Does anyone want to second Mr. Braverman's amendment?
Doesn't Mr. Ryback have to agree to amend it? No?
It would require a second, and then the majority of the board, and then the motion would be amended.
Well, Mr., may I ask what, what the language would be? I think to, I could suggest, may I suggest something?
I wrote down verbatim what Mr. Braverman said as the amendment, I could repeat it if you'd like.
Okay. I was going to change.
Yes.
Mr. Braverman's amendment to Mr. Ryback's motion is to include an ongoing study on how computers are used, and what the needs of the students are after high school.
Mr. Prezioso?
How long would a study like this be? I mean, uh...
By the time we get a committee together, how long would this process take? I mean, it's like dragging our feet. He made a motion that saves us money down, down the road, if we ever change our platform, our teachers will be prepared. So just putting a committee together, what does that mean? How long is that going to take, or is it going to prepare us?
Mr. Braverman?
If the object is to save money down the road, put it into your motion, that shouldn't be the object. The object should be to have something valuable for... The object should be to have something valuable for the students to use and know what the ongoing process should be.
Okay, I'm still looking for a second to Mr. Braverman's amendment.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion on this? Mr. Ryback?
I think Mr. Braverman certainly has merit in his thinking of, you know, what to do. I think we certainly need some more thought how that would develop. But I just want to comment on one thing. The purpose of my motion is to better equip teachers for the value of what they're using, with the value of what they're using, and certainly, I would have to consider cost, but clearly, the educational value. It'd be, it behooves us to give them the educational instructional opportunities to look at what's out there and how it could benefit them in the classroom instead of being locked into just Apple. And that's really where I'm coming from on this. Would it save money? Of course it would save money because we could make decisions. We, a platform can come up three years from now that would be much beneficial, have a longer warranty, and why shouldn't we take advantage of that? But my purpose is, why shouldn't we allow our teachers to have the ability to switch to different platforms instead of just being locked into something? What if down the road, Apple turns out to be, you know, the worst of the lot? And yet, that's the only one our teachers have experience with and feel comfortable with. I think that would be a mistake, and that's where I was coming from.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I do have one comment, and then we will do a roll call on the amendment. I think what Mr. Braverman has proposed in his amendment has merit, that we do need to look at on an ongoing basis what our students would be facing as they go off to college, and chances are, that will change over time. And that's why we probably need something on an ongoing basis. However, I don't see that it is of, of a pressing need at this particular moment that we do that. This is a long-range type of thing that would be something that could possibly be established for the beginning of next year and then ongoing. I think, I think it's very worthwhile to evaluate the technology that we're using in the sense of, is it doing the kind of job we hope it's doing for our students? And are our students at some kind of advantage or disadvantage as they go off to college? Possibly because the colleges are using a different type of technology. I think that's the kind of thing that Mr. Braverman is after, and I think there's merit in that. However, my own personal opinion is that we don't need to make that necessarily a part of the motion that we're dealing with tonight. Anyone else that want to comment before we do a roll call on this amendment, which we have, that's the thing that has to take place next? Mr. Nostine?
I definitely agree exactly what Mr. Poy has said, that I think that, you know, we don't want to rush into this. I think that there's so much merit in there, we want to get it right with that amendment. I think that maybe we need to bring that in front of a policy committee, to write a policy and come up with a committee, how, you know, the nuts and bolts of what you're suggesting, because I really think it's important. All too often, we tend to throw money at technology figuring that it's helping education. I think we need some, to maybe even develop some metrics in that technology committee, maybe, to come up with a way to say, yes, this amount of money did help our students. Because at the end of the day, that's all we're really, that's the most important thing, is that we're making sure that the money that we're spending on technology is actually accomplishing what it's set out to do. And currently, I don't see there's any, there's no way to really do that currently, the way it's set up. So I think what Mr. Braverman is suggesting is a great idea. However, I think that it definitely needs to be firmed up in a much more succinct fashion and to have more of the nuts and bolts and details of how that's going to happen. So that's how I feel.
Mr. Ryback?
I couldn't concur more, Tom. And Marvin, I think that was a really extremely beneficial idea, but I do think it needs some more structure, and I agree with what Mr. Nostine was saying. I'm just curious, Dr. Alvich, as part of what you do, do you, is it, are you able to integrate that into your normal working as far as looking at technology, working with the technology committee, to see if what we're doing is beneficial? Or should we be heading in a, should we begin heading in a different direction?
No, absolutely. I think that getting a committee together of students, staff, administration, possibly board members and parents also, and bringing everybody together and looking at exactly. But I think we do need to have a plan of what exactly we want to look at. My head is kind of spinning with action research ideas on this and how we can move forward with it. But I think it's definitely something that would be beneficial, and we could actually look at some data and see where we were moving with it.
And I think it's something that has to be ongoing, because we're looking, we're looking at a three-year period here. So I think by year two, we should be knowing whether or not, hey, we want to stay with this, or maybe we have to move in another direction. But it's only through an ongoing type of committee or research into what we're doing that we'll get that kind of, you know, information.
Mr. Poy, can I answer one of the other questions that came up?
Yes.
One of the questions that had come up before was, have we talked to colleges? I did reach out to the colleges that, to three of the colleges that are in New Jersey, Rutgers, Rider, and TCNJ. Rutgers and Rider did both get back to me and basically said they do not require any specific device or platform when their students come in. However, some of their specific departments do require something specific. But for the most part, when a student enters college, they're not, they're not required, they're not requiring any specific device or platform.
Okay, Mr. Gorski, roll call, vote on the, on Mr. Braverman's amendment, please.
Ms. Arminio?
I'm going to vote no, but I do hope we can pursue this in the future, and I think we should have a separate resolution, and I'd like Mr. Braverman perhaps. So I'm going to vote no with the hope of restructuring it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Braverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
No.
Mr. Prezielsso?
No.
Mr. Ryback?
I'm going to echo what my colleague, Michelle Arminio, said. I'm going to vote no, but it's with the hope that we can bring this around so that it's restructured and in a very structured manner in that, you know, we have some real direction there. So I hope that it's brought up again.
Recorded as no. Mr. Poy?
No.
Mr. Board President, amendment does not pass. That takes us back to the motion on the floor moved by Mr. Ryback. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the creation of in-house professional development technology opportunities which are varied rather than platform-specific, so as to better enable staff members in the district to develop technology skills that will be adaptable to a variety of different technology devices in the future.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Gorski, roll call, vote on that one?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Ask for questions?
Yes, I did, but you...
Should we have a budget?
Ms. Poy?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe pertaining to cost and budget, Dr. Alvich was asked if this motion would require any additional computers and cost, and the answer was no. That there is already an in-house professional development budget, which would just be, would have a flavor change, so to speak, to be more differentiated instead of just Apple.
The answer was?
No costs. No additional costs. No additional costs.
I just have one question about that. If there's no additional cost, the money that you have in the budget now, wasn't that earmarked for something specific, or are we now changing that?
Our professional development budget is used on an ongoing basis depending on what the needs come up throughout the school year. So no, it's not earmarked for anything specific at this point. We use it as needs come up. For example, when the speech and language pathologists have a professional learning community together, that they need someone to come in to cover their license, they have to earn a certain number of credits towards their license, we would bring someone in for that. So it's not earmarked for anything specific. We could kind of utilize it in the way that we need it for our staff.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this, on Mr. Ryback's motion? Mr. Zarneski?
I'm just trying to recall your comments last night that this was going to be a discussion on the iPads only, on whether or not we had discussion on this or not. This seems to be something that is totally different, has nothing to do with the specifics of the resolution to either go with the one-on-one initiative or not. I'm still going back to where I believe that this should go through the proper committees, because like Ms. Kolpanis said, we are a board of committee, not of a whole. Yes, I do agree with Michelle as far as resolutions can be brought up at any time. But I think this needs to be more investigated on how to do this, what to go about doing with this. And then we still have, if this iPad initiative goes through, we have three years to come up with another platform and development through that time. Or this should only take a matter of maybe a month or two to put together any information we need to go forward with more professional development for teachers and staff. But I just remember that our, that your comments yesterday was that, our discussion today was going to be on the one-in-one, one-to-one initiative only.
I appreciate your comment, although I do disagree because I think the professional development, it is mentioned in the iPad contract that we are considering, that there would be a professional development provided by Apple. And I think this is pertinent to that, that particular initiative. I think what Mr. Ryback is doing with this motion is trying, making an effort to not have us locked into Apple with all the future training, even though the, the training will be provided by Apple as needed, but to open that up so that we're not faced with what we heard earlier, that to try to bring in a new platform for next year would not be possible because of the impact on the teachers, the time element, et cetera. So I think this is addressing that particular issue. We may disagree, but that's the way I see it. Ms. Arminio?
Yes, I'm to Mr. Chineski's point. I understand, but I think without a definitive, without definitive language, and this resolution sort of suggests definitive language about beginning this process. You mentioned that we have three years to go through and then change. Well, we're just coming out of three years, and that didn't happen. So perhaps we do need the definitive language, sort of as Mr. Ventrilo suggested, as a goal for the future. Sometimes because we get caught up in the crises of the moment or the budget issues, I mean, we, every month, we have serious issues to consider, and I think without a direction for which I believe this resolution is, we may not address it. It may take two years or two and a half years, and we may find ourselves back within three years having the same issue. So I think the purpose of this is to set down a goal, if you will, and a direction for us to start addressing it now. And I think it's, it's something we need to consider. So I'm ready for a vote.
It's Kolpanovic?
There are sometimes an issue that board members bring up that have gone through committee, that we've discussed for months and months, and we say, we don't have enough information. Let's bring it back. Let's wait till next month. Let's get more information. This is just something that's come up today. I don't feel I have enough information to make a decision. I believe that, again, we work as a board of committees. This, I don't see that we have to rush into approving a resolution today. And I know many of our current board members have sat here and said, oh, we rush into, we rush into, we rush into transparency. And so here we are. We've talked about this for 40 minutes, and we're now rushing to make a decision.
Okay.
Mr. Ryback?
I can't agree, Kathy. I think that, number one, I think this is absolutely directly linked to the iPad issue that we're thinking about today. And I think delaying it and putting it through committees and delaying it is really not serving our teachers. We're here, we're listening to our assistant superintendent tell us that this is something that she would support, and it's something that can be done without stress at least. And we're looking to provide that support for the teachers, which will ultimately benefit the students as well as the taxpayers. I can't see delaying this. We don't, as a board, we don't tell, say specifically what professional development is. But yet, we have our assistant superintendent who did bring this up at a committee, and it was well-received, and telling us that this is something that can be done. I can't see delaying this. I think this is something that has to go along with the iPad issue. I think we owe it to our teachers, we owe it to our, the taxpayers, and mainly to our students, because we want to keep them at the forefront of technology. And I think delaying it would just be a disservice.
All right, any further comments or questions before we do the roll call, vote on this? Okay, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Arminio?
Yes.
Mr. Braverman?
No.
Mr. Zarneski?
No.
Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolpanovic?
No.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Prezielsso?
Yes.
Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes.
Mr. Gorski? Okay, I will now read the, a resolution regarding the authorization for the acquisition of instructional technology. Whereas NJSA 18A, 18A-42 authorizes the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe to enter into a contract exceeding the fiscal year for the leasing of equipment of every nature and kind, and whereas the board has a need to acquire 2,200 new iPad units and 200 MacBook units collectively referred to as equipment for school purposes, and whereas the board desires to acquire the equipment through state contract, now therefore be it resolved by the board as follows. Section one, the board hereby authorizes a superintendent, the board secretary, and the board's counsel to proceed to draft documents and conduct such, and conduct such other activities as are necessary to accomplish the acquisition of the equipment through state contract. Section two, the board hereby directs the board secretary to process the necessary purchase orders and contracts to acquire the equipment. Section three, the board president and the board secretary are hereby authorized and directed to determine all matters in connection with the acquisition of the equipment, not determined by this or subsequent resolution of the board, as permitted by law. Section four, a copy of this resolution shall be placed on file with the secretary of the board. Section five, the making of and submission to the county superintendent of the application as required by NJAC. 6A:26-10.1D is hereby authorized and approved, and the board's counsel, along with other representatives of the board, is hereby authorized to prepare and submit such application and to represent the board in matters pertaining thereto. Section six, this resolution shall take effect immediately. That is the resolution. Is there a second?
Still moved?
Okay, before a vote, are any additional questions or comments? Ms. Mayo?
We're getting 200 less. So, did Apple agree to the same price?
No, Apple, Mr. Ventrilo and I had a conversation with two representatives who are higher-ups with Apple. They had thought amongst themselves that they would be able to accommodate the same price with 200 units less, that they were going to check with the senior management of Apple, and they have come back and not been able to give us the same price. I believe that the units now are approximately $20 higher. Ms. Dr. Alvich?
The new, the new proposal that they've given us, the original proposal for the 2,400 units was $498, which, just so I can remind everybody, that's already $200 cheaper. So they had given us that deal originally. With reducing the number to 2,200 units, they increased the price to $513 per unit. However, they did reduce the unit price of the teacher laptops from $1,125.59 to $1,082.1 cent, and there were other... cent, and there were other reductions with the PD, the case, and the service and support line items. So the original quote for all, for the whole package, for the three-year lease from Apple, was $1,610, $610,461.37. The new price quote with the 2,200, with the, with the 200 less is $1,501,953.50.
Can you repeat that last number?
So it went down approximately a little over, a few dollars over $100,000.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Alvin, Mr. Poy?
Apple is also granting 0% financing on this deal.
Yes, they're still continuing that.
Which would then prevent us from having to go out to bid for financing. That's a savings of about $36,000 on financing costs. That, that's not new, that was in the initial proposal.
Ms. Arminio?
That's, that's over the three years, or is that?
Three years, correct.
So there won't be, is there any clause increasing the interest rate if it changes? In other words, is it a floating interest rate, or is it a?
It's a fixed interest rate of zero, no interest.
Over the three years?
Over the three years, yes.
Mr. Nostine, I think you wanted to?
Thank you. Just a couple of concerns. I, I, I heard Dr. Alvin said that they're giving us a $200 discount, or originally they were giving us a 200. I never saw that 200.
Can you talk into the mic and talk?
I never saw that 200 savings, because basically the cost of a, of the 32 gig iPad Air with Apple Care is $550 to the general public. We're paying now $513, okay? Originally, we're paying, you know, a little over 400, so there was never a $200 discount, as was mentioned. So, I, I mean, I just, I don't know, Apple doesn't seem like they're really being too, they're not too ready to negotiate, let's put it that way, for somebody's in the, who's in the position that they're in. On the plus side, I think that by having the discussion that we had, we've saved over $100,000. And, and that's a big plus, and that's a credit to this board for taking the time to discuss it like we are, because that's what we have to do. We asked the taxpayers in the last budget to pony up 7.67% extra taxes. We have to show the public, and we have to show each other that we're willing to say, we have to spend wisely. You know, we questioned right off the bat why the teachers needed to have 200 new iPads when there should be really in pristine shape. My other concern now is, are there others that we could possibly use that aren't in pristine shape? If we can knock out another 200 out of this, that would be another $100,000 savings. That, that definitely can help us. I'm happy to see that there's some concessions made, and that's very important, because I think unfortunately, when this technology committee started to go about their task, there was no criteria as part of the process of a budget. There was no criteria to say, let's, we have a specific amount of money that we need to get under, or a specific savings that we need to have from the last time. That was never part of that, and I think that going forward, and the next go-round, we need to present to the committee that's looking at this, that it's not just a bottomless pit, that we just can't say, we want the latest and the greatest, that we have to have a, a cost savings less than what the last go-round was. We've accomplished that this time, and I'm, I'm very proud of the board that we did ask these, these, these questions, so I just wanted to state that.
Can I ask some clarification?
Yes, Mr. Mayow.
Mr. Nostine, you said MacBook Airs are $500, but we're not getting MacBook Airs, we're getting iPads.
iPad Airs, yes.
We're getting iPad Airs. You said MacBook Airs.
Okay.
Well, they're different.
MacBook Pro, we're not getting MacBook, we're getting MacBook Pros, and we're getting iPad Airs.
Right.
Excuse, excuse me if I?
No, I'm, I'm just confused, that's all. Okay. So the price of the iPads to consumers are 500 over?
Five fifty with, exactly like we're configuring them, with the Apple iCare.
Okay, okay.
And we're paying $513.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Prezielsso?
Are we going to use these new iPads for the Park assessment tests?
Yes. And the positive piece of this, Mr. Washington, I think, talked about it at the last discussion, the current iPads that we have now, that we use this year for the assessments, are the older version iPads, obviously. The students have had them. In order to prepare, to get them ready, test-ready, we, the tech department actually had to configure each iPad for the testing. With this new version of the iPad, there will be a way to switch over to the testing mode remotely, so Mr. Washington will be able to switch over to the testing mode, to the testing mode of each student's iPad. So students will be taking the iPads, taking the, the Park assessment on their own iPads. It will also alleviate some of the scheduling difficulties we had this year at the high school with, with Park, because students will be able to take the, the assessments in their regular classes, in their regular math and language arts classes. So it will not, we won't have to set up testing centers, if you will.
You had to set up those iPads that were here last week, you would have to do that next year if, if you used them at, with testing?
If we did not get the new ones, yes, we would have to do the same thing we did this year. But with the new ones, we wouldn't have to do that.
Out of these 2,200 that we're getting, and how many are backups?
I don't know that answer.
From the scope of the discussion that Dr. Alvin had with certain board members, presumably you're going to not trade in or sell 2,400 units any longer. You're going to, you're going to trade in 200 units less than we had anticipated before, so you would have 200 existing units as loaners.
We, and we, the reason?
The information we don't get, I didn't know we were doing this. Now, there were 200 iPads out there for testing, and they were in excellent condition. Those could be used as backups. Now, I'm just hearing, that's what you're doing, you're keeping those?
No, we're keeping, the two, the reason, we're going down 200, the 200 that we're keeping are the ones that the teachers are going to use.
Point of clarification, the teacher units, the teacher iPads are not of the same year as the students' iPads. They were purchased subsequent to the students' purchase orders, so they're varying degrees newer than the students. They, they, we, we could use those for backups in our discussions with the technology department.
And the, the, the iPads that were being used for testing, we did, we do have some on hand as spares, so that if students break it, or it goes down, we're able to give them a replacement, and then we send theirs out to wherever it needs to be, to go to be replaced.
So we're keeping some of those?
Yeah, so those, yes, and the ones we used for testing were those spares, plus we collected all of the teacher iPads in order to use them during testing.
How many are we going to send out for auction?
Mr. Washington, do you have that answer?
About 1,800. 1,800. 1,800 would go, would go out for resale, as well as the current, the teacher's current MacBook Pros would go out.
How many, how many do we have? I'm sorry, how many total iPads do we have now? And we're selling 1,800?
Mr. Washington, could you possibly come to, maybe to the podium over there?
Couldn't hide forever, Reg.
We currently have about 2,065 iPads in the hands of students.
Presumably those would be all sold. We would only hold on to the existing teacher units.
Yeah, we're going to keep the teacher's units, give them back to the teachers, and we'll hold a few of the current student iPads to use as spares. Since we're anticipating opening school with somewhere around 2,200 kids, then we have a need to have some spares. And what we'll do is, when we collect the student iPads at the end of the year, we'll try and keep the best 200 of those and sell off the, the remainder.
You had about 200 for the Park assessment test here not too long ago, and they were excellent shape. I was wondering if it's cost efficient to sell all of them, when, when maybe possible using them down the road for something else?
The, the 200 that we were using for testing were collected from the teachers to be used for testing. Those are the, those are the teachers' current iPads.
Ms. Arminio?
It, it's not stated in this resolution, and I, sorry that I failed to ask it sooner, but if we're selling the iPads, the, the current ones that we have, will that money be earmarked to defray the cost of this specifically, or will it be going into the general fund?
As was the case previously, when we comply with the state's procurement laws for the sale of the existing iPads, all the proceeds are used to offset the new purchase. There's nothing residual that went into the general fund or was used for any other purpose. It, it is not part of this resolution. This is the authorization to purchase 2,200 iPads and 200 MacBooks under state contract. There is no financing component, otherwise that would have to be a separate financing bid. And then you will have a, a subsequent resolution proposed for the bid for sale of the existing stock.
And in that resolution, would we be able to specifically say, state that that money is to defer, defer the cost of?
Yes.
Would you be opposed to that, Mr. Gorsky?
I have no opposition.
Okay, that, that would be acceptable. Okay, thank you.
She offering an amendment to this?
No, Mrs. Arminio did not offer an amendment to this.
No, no, it's not an amendment.
We're talking about a forthcoming resolution that's not introduced yet.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Nostine? Just a quick question with regards to the Apple Care and spares. I thought that Apple provided a 24-hour spare if their, if a unit goes down.
That is correct. They provide a 24-hour notice to give you a new iPad. However, that's 24 hours from the point in time they receive a purchase order. A normal repair on an iPad is $49, so we have to go through the process of securing a purchase order to have those iPads repaired. Now, we don't submit a purchase order every time a single student breaks an iPad. We wait till we get about 10 or 20, so that we're not constantly bombarding the business office with POs.
But the first year, there should be no charge, correct?
Sir, that's not correct. You pay the $99 for Apple Care, and then every time there's a cracked screen on an iPad, you pay another $49.
Well, I understand for the cracked screen, obviously, if that, you know, that's not a warranty issue, but that's really only, the only item that we're looking at that would be of, of issue. In other words, if, if a unit goes down, there's no purchase order required for the first year because it's under warranty, correct?
That is correct. There's no purchase order required for manufacturer's defect.
Right, okay, so just, just basically a cracked screen situation.
That's correct.
So, I mean, realistically, we shouldn't be too concerned about a lot of spares at this point in time, because these are brand-spankinging new units, correct?
Well, our history has shown that even when we had year one of the iPad, we still experienced about 400 cracked screens per year. So I would anticipate the same thing.
And also part of the, I know the original presentation to the finance committee gave the option of a three- or a four-year finance. Has that been discussed, or will that be discussed?
Mr. Poy?
The interest-free financing that was negotiated with Apple is for a three-year lease. If you extend the term longer than three years, not only are you exceeding the asset life with financing, which is never recommended, but Apple then would presumably charge an interest factor because it's going out much longer.
But I thought at the finance committee, it was the same price for both, I have the original presentation, it was the same cost for three or four years, a total outlay.
That was the asset total cost divided by the term. The asset total cost didn't change, but I believe the financing over four years compared to three would change.
Ms. Arminio? Yes, I, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, and it, this may be boilerplate language, but in the, I guess it's the second paragraph, the fiscal year for leasing of equipment of every nature and kind, does that language mean that there could be other costs incurred, and we might not be talking about the $1,505,000?
No, no, that's general language. You're going to get 2,200 new iPads and 200 MacBooks. In addition to that, there's some covers, and as Mr. Washington said, there's a warranty, that's an additional cost that's included in that price. There's ancillary peripherals that come with the iPad, and that's what that language goes to. What you're getting is what you see here, 2,200 iPads, 200 MacBooks, and related peripherals.
And section three, the language again, authorize and directed to determine all matters in connection with the acquisition of equipment not determined by this or subsequent resolution of the board as permitted by law. I guess I just need an explanation of what that means to?
What's not clear about that?
I'm sorry, and it's really not a trick question, or maybe it is.
The, the, the board president and the board secretary are hereby authorized and directed to determine all matters in conjunction with the acquisition of the equipment not determined by this or subsequent resolution of the board. There's a lot of procurement laws that, that go into this, for example, the state contract. We would have to confirm that Apple has a valid state contract number for the devices. These are all activities that are part and parcel of the purchase, and that authorizes and directs the, the board president and the board secretary to make sure that all those are handled as well.
Essentially, they're, we're giving you permission to fill out the paperwork?
The, the purchase order is listed here, that's the paperwork. And, you know, there's, there's nothing other than what you see here is what you're going to get. 2,200 iPads, 200 MacBooks, related peripherals, purchased through state contract, whereas everybody may be familiar with that term, that's where the state goes out and does bidding on these items already, and the districts join in on that state purchase to the lowest bidder, and we then avoid the, the bid-spec costs and attorney costs and things like that.
And I know you've said that for the most part, we've done very well with the state contracts, and I accept that, but are, are there times, and I don't know if this would be a time, when the state contracts would exceed what we can get in the?
Yes, there are times where state contracts exceed that, but when you're talking about the volume that you're purchasing here, I, I think it's safe to say that this is the best price that you're going to get on that many, is through this state contract purchase.
Okay, so you have confidence in that process?
Yes, and in fact, one of the questions that came up before had to do with the refurbished units, and the price of the refurbished units, forgive me, I don't remember the exact number, but a refurbished old used unit was almost 80% of a new unit, and, and?
$435.
Yeah, so, so the state, state contract price is, is very good. The state established that to be the lowest price that, through their bidding process.
Mr. Washington, I, I do have a question, because of, we keep hearing about the cracked screens, and I thought, I thought there was some type of new cover that we were getting, or that we have started using to reduce the chances of cracked screens. Am I mistaken, or?
No, sir, you're absolutely correct. The new iPads would have a new cover, and the hope, the hope is that they would provide better protection, but without that experience, I would not say definitively that they will. So I'm just going to go by our past history, and that's been, been that we crack 400 a year. If we crack fewer, that's all the better.
Please keep in mind that these are mobile technology units, and just by that very nature, they're subject to dropping, even by the most careful students, and they are subject to higher breaking and cracked screens than would be a PC stationary on a desk. And that's why that number probably is seemingly high to some folks. These, these devices are carried around back and forth to school every day, and that's just the nature of the device.
Also, I, I think we're all aware, but, but I'll, I'll bring it up just in case, the classroom environment is very different than the home environment. Classrooms do not have carpeting, classrooms do not have sofas and soft cushioned seats. They are very hard surfaces, the floors, the walls, all the furniture, it's all hard surface. So dropping an Apple in that environment is very different than if you're at home, or even if you're here in the media center, where there's carpeting on this floor that would soften that impact. So it's not necessarily that the students are throwing these things around, they occasionally will slip, but if they're in the school environment, there's a greater chance that they're going to get a cracked screen. I'm assuming that, that's correct, right?
That's absolutely correct, sir.
Okay. Mr. Thorny, you've been sitting there very quietly, but you're our student rep, you're one of the people that uses the iPad, you have friends that are also students using the iPad. the iPad. I know I called on you the last time to make any remarks, but you have heard what we've been talking about tonight. Is there anything that you want to add to that?
When you say "add," what, are you looking at any specific issue you want me to comment on?
Well, we, we're, for example, we're talking about how they get broken and things of that nature. I assume you've never broken yours?
No.
Have, have you ever been present when one has cracked?
There have been two close times, but I've never actually seen one crack. I don't know, 400 seems quite large to me, a large number. I, again, I, these seem pretty durable. I know that if, you know, for people, if they do crack them, then the new ones tend to get replaced with a, a different protective cover. I believe it's what, autoboxing?
It's similar to an autobox.
Okay. Yeah, that protects it better to, ideally to help prevent future cracks. Again, you know, I've, I've never really experienced any issue with that. I've had, you know, glitches with some of like the, the software on the iPads, but never any residual damage of that nature.
Okay. Is there anything else you want to add?
Not really. I, I do like Mr. Ryback's idea earlier of looking at, you know, students' needs and assessing, you know, students' needs, teachers' needs, and assessing that going through, forward through a committee structure. But I think that that might be something best done at the high school level so that they can help both implement immediate changes, you know, where necessary, and also come with a recommendation to the Board.
Okay. Since you are in the 11th grade, you're a junior, I would assume this summer that you'll start looking at colleges and visiting campuses?
Yes, I'm busy over the summer, but hopefully I'll find some time for that.
Okay. Or, or at least in the fall, you'll be doing some of that so that you'll decide on where you might want to go to school, where you want to apply. You'll be visiting college campuses. Well, if you do, let me put it this way, if you do, then I hope that you can help us by inquiry in terms of, do they use a particular platform? Is it a matter of the student provides their own platform, or they are required to have a particular platform? And maybe inquire about, are there any colleges that are using the iPads in an instructional capacity? And if not, what are they using?
Okay.
Because you have an opportunity to do that, and you can bring back some useful information.
Absolutely.
All right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion on this? Mr. Preziosou?
I wanted to discuss, and I'd like to ask the doctor, have, before we sell these units, and some of them are probably going to be very good, did we think about having them in the resource rooms or using them for the special needs department?
We have not, because we were looking at them to help finance the purchase of the new ones.
It might be cost-effective, maybe, to look at helping them in the resource rooms. We could always ask Marietta if she could use them.
Mr. Washington, what, what would you think of the, moving the iPads to other classrooms?
We could certainly do that. I, I wouldn't, I don't know how many will be salvageable like that, but I'm sure there will be some that we can utilize in other areas of the district. Certainly, I wouldn't want to give them, other schools, something that's not going to be reliable.
Well, just for the resource rooms, if that's possible, I mean...
We can look and see at the ones that, that are available that we'd be able to use. Also know that we have been purchasing some other technology devices throughout the district using Title I funds. We just did, did some for the Title I schools. The PTAs have been very generous in giving some, some of the, some of the PTAs in different schools have been very generous in giving money to the schools, and, and they've been used to purchase to be able to use in the classroom.
And those resource rooms were specifically designated, Anthony, just to let you know.
Right. And part of Mr. Washington's budget also was possibly looking at some type of a Chromebook pilot down at some of the lower grades, specifically with the third grade moving to Mill Lake. They're going to need technology there for the park testing next year. So that's another possibility that we're also looking at. So that would also give us another piece to, how can we use other devices? And, and see how it's, how we could use that, if that, that could be another option.
Ms. Kolopovich?
At the last meeting when we discussed buying the iPads, we had looked at buying 2,400, and now we're buying 2,200. So where did that difference of 200 come from? Did it come from a discussion? Did it come from a, a recommendation from the administration?
Part of it, you want to take that?
I think we were trying to do the best that we can, as far as, you know, some of the questions that came from the Board of Education to the administration, as far as how to not only be more cost-effective, but also at the same time is that, you know, what could we do, obviously, to instill, you know, we need, we need to go forward on this. I guess is that, the best that I can ask for you to do tonight is this. I, I think the administration, I think that Mike, Reggie, Rob, Dory, myself, is that we've answered every single question that you've presented to us. We have done this, you know, somebody, as a matter of fact, I think even Steve had mentioned before, as far as even the timeline, I need to bring this up to the attention of the Board, is that we've been doing this since December. Since December, we've been having this conversation. The, the tech boat at that time took place, the committee work is done, we've gone before the committees, we've done the Finance Committee, the Curriculum Committee, we've discussed it here at the Board level as well, too. The questions have come to us, we've answered every single question. Mr. Washington certainly has been here at least twice, that I'm aware of. Dory's obviously been here as well, too. Mike has answered the same questions. The, so back to your question then, Kathy, and it's a fair question, but obviously, it's a compromise. The administration is basically trying to compromise to meet the needs of the Board, as, as you are obviously being very sensitive to the needs of the taxpayers, we're helping you to do that. We, we still believe, obviously, is that this is the way to go. We've negotiated with Apple on a number of occasions. Mike and I have certainly been very strong with the negotiations as well, too. We, you know, just to let you know is that the haggling that we did back and forth was very strong-handed. The best that they could do, they kept on coming back with, obviously, listen, Apple's in, they're there as a business. They are there to make money. But as far as, you know, where we are, back to your question again, this is an administrative compromise. Teachers are not getting the new laptops, iPads, rather.
Will we have enough, or will we have to buy more for any new students that come into the district in the high school next year?
I think we're okay, Reggie. Is that correct?
Yes, we should be fine, because obviously, we're going to give the teachers back their original iPad, so they won't be getting new. We're going to reserve a couple of the iPads, the better ones that we can find from the students, and keep those for spares, or possibly issuing to new students who come in after school year starts.
And again, with the taxpayers here as well, too, is that I want you to say is that, I want to say is that the Board has done their due diligence as far as making sure, listen, they, they've held us to the fire, so to speak, to make sure, is the fact that we've done everything that we can do to decrease the cost. Everything that we can do has been done. And, and I have to be honest with you, is that they have certainly been very demanding and insistent, as far as, you know, getting the questions answered and trying to reduce the price. And Dory even mentioned it before, as a matter of fact, it was at one time 1.6 mil, it's down to 1.5. That's $100,000 in savings, and teachers are not getting new ones. I hope I answered that, Kathy.
Mr. Preziosou?
Do we have to hire new staff in order to accommodate these new iPads?
There are no plans to hire new staff because of this initiative.
Any further questions? Okay, then I move that we accept this resolution? And, oh, we, it's already been first and second, and I'm sorry, okay? Lost track of time there. Okay, Mr. Gorsky, roll call vote then. Ms. Arminio?
Despite Mr. Braverman's often objection to my going on a small soliloquy, I have to say that I, I was prepared to say no to this initiative, just because I think we've been held in a revolving door with this particular technology. However, this was a great meeting this evening. I thank all the professionals for giving and answering the questions, and actually changed my mind as of the last few minutes, so I appreciate everybody's input. I will vote yes.
Thank you. That's recorded as yes. Mr. Braverman? Mr. Zarneski?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Kolopovich?
Yes.
Mr. Nostine?
Yes.
Mr. Preziosou?
I, too, I agree with Michelle that at least we're trying, and we save $100,000 right now. At least we had one option, and I was going to vote no, but now I'll vote yes.
Vote is yes. Thank you, sir. Mr. Ryback?
Yes.
And Mr. Poy?
Yes.
Mr. Board President, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gorsky. Thank you.
I did not do that.
Maybe we could buy a few more microphones. All right. At this time, we will open the floor for the second public forum, second public session. Anyone wishing to speak? This is the forum where you can speak on any topic, you're not restricted to the agenda. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and restrict your comment or questions to three minutes, please.
My name is Victor Cooper. I live at 525 Abbott Court in Monroe Township. I haven't been privy to your previous discussions, but two questions occurred to me after hearing your very, very excellent consideration of this purchase. One of the questions is, aren't any of the existing units usable? Aren't they in good enough shape to use to further reduce the numbers of new units that need to be purchased? That's one question. I'll ask another one when that's answered.
That question was raised by board members previously, and Mr. Ventrilo and I had lengthy conversations with very high-up Apple representatives about the lifespan of the iPad. The clear answer that we were given from Apple is that the iPad is designed to last between two and no longer than three years. Then the problems that arise are that new operating systems are downloaded that cannot be installed on the old devices. We've seen that on the, the first initiative. And buttons frequently wear out. There's a main button that's touched every time you have to use the device, and the off button at the top, and the volume buttons, they're just not meant to last that long. So, right now, the, the devices are in the hands of students. 2,065 devices are in the possession of students. The only way we would be able to assess which one of those are still functional is to recall them back to the Technology Department. That goes beyond the scope of what a teacher can do in a classroom by saying, "Who's got a good unit? Raise your hand." It just would not be productive. So, from the existing stock of student units, they have exceeded their useful life for the purpose that they're going to be used, and it's administration's recommendation, based upon Apple's lifespans, recommendation that they be taken out of service and replaced.
Okay, that's interesting. I have grandchildren in school in Raleigh, North Carolina, who have been using these for five years, interestingly.
And, and content also is requiring newer devices, because the apps and the software programs that are used on the devices are becoming more resource-demanding than the old units can provide.
The second question I had is, currently, there are 3,400 non-age-restricted homes under construction or approved for construction in the town, going to generate approximately 2,200 students over the build-out period. During the next three years, which is the term you're considering for use of these devices, have you projected how many additional units you'll need due to new students coming in, and how do you intend to handle those needs?
That's a trick question.
As Mr. Washington stated before, we are going to hold on to some of the existing stock once it's recalled to the Tech Department and an assessment's made, and then the 200 teacher units are going to be held, because those are bought subsequent to the students' units. And it is our understanding at this point that we have enough with this resolution to satisfy the next three years of students.
How many current, current students are you projecting for next year in the high school?
I don't know specifically for the high school offhand. I know district-wide, the number is 2,670 for next year.
Two?
267 new students, district-wide, next year.
Okay. What's the projection for the year after that?
I don't recall. Probably in the same range.
Probably greater, because the build-out is well underway, and some of these houses that are being built, I have from firsthand knowledge, have not one family, but two families, not one student, not two students, but three students. There's going to be a deluge of students that you need to accommodate, and if you can use the existing Apples for teachers and the existing Apples for new students, why can't you use them for all students? Doesn't make sense to me, what you're saying.
Mr. Poy? If you'd like me to comment to that, we could hold the existing units and not sell them, but what that is synonymous with is an expansion of the program to different grade levels, then. And that is going to require a very big price tag that has not been considered by administration yet.
I'm talking about students coming into the high school, not, not to the school system, to the high school.
I believe I've answered the question, that we have enough units to handle the next three years' students with this resolution.
I, I appreciate your concern about the growing enrollments in our district because of new houses going up, but we also have to keep in mind that as those new students are coming into the high school, we also have students that are graduating each year. So graduating classes are now, what, about four, 500? About 500 students in graduating class?
They're getting higher than that now.
Okay. So, and often with new houses, the students that are coming in are of a younger age, and so the impact of that is not immediately felt at the high school. But with the demographic study that we did have done recently, the administration and the Board has an understanding that, yes, there will be an impact of these new students. But when you're talking about 2,200 students coming into the township, keep in mind that, that as, as time progresses, we're also moving students out of the school system. But thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Mr. Roach?
Robert Roach, 18 Muirfield Boulevard. I, too, would like to congratulate the Board on its deliberate process. I think it was a very, very well-run Board meeting, and you guys really put a lot of effort into it, and I thank you for it. A question I have is, so the, the budget for this is 1.5, so I guess it's over three years, so the budget for each year will be, what, $500,000 a year to pay for the, the iPads? Is that correct, Mike?
That's approximately right. If you take the 1.5 million, divide by three years, there's no interest, it's about $500,000 a year. However, the proceeds from the sale of the existing stock is going to be put down as a down payment, reducing the 1.5 million by a few hundred thousand dollars. In addition to that, there is insurance that's collected from parents, and any surplus from that will also go towards the, the down payment on the units. So this will fit within what has been budgeted for the lease amount of $400,000.
I, I seem to remember from prior years, and I may be mistaken, but I thought that if the students broke the screen, that the parents were supposed to pay, supposed to pay for that, or was that something else that the parents were, had to pay for?
Each unit has a $100 Apple Care on them, and the cracked screens are subject to a parent charge of, Reggie, is it $50?
That is correct.
Yeah. So basically, the school is not, the, the, the school budget is not paying for the cracked screens, is that correct?
That is, that is now correct.
You know, one question I, I have, and it sort of was raised before, the prior speaker, and is that, you know, the iPads, to me, it's three years and, and out for $500 a unit seems ludicrous. Myself, as a citizen, I would not go out and pay $500 to buy an Apple iPad if I knew it wasn't going to be good after three years. And so I, I don't understand why we couldn't cut this, the cost down by one quarter by telling the current juniors to take their iPads into their senior year and use them the senior year. And I understand Mr. Gorsky saying that certain programs couldn't be on, on that, but I don't know whether that could be worked out. And then have the, and then just buy, instead of 2,200, you know, three quarters of that, and, and from the 2,000-some that are being set aside, not being used, use those for backups. I mean, that just seems like a, to me, a logical idea. But I just throw that out, I mean, I, I don't need any comment unless somebody really wants to comment on it. And one of the other things that I would recommend that... recommend that, based on Mr. Poy, what Mr. Mr. Poy mentioned to the young man that I really enjoy listening to, I'll tell you, he's a great kid, and is, I think you should consider a, some type of a study looking at whether other schools in your Middlesex County, in your same geographical, not geographical, but same rating area, or even just Middlesex County schools, what are they doing? What are they using? How are they having success with it? And, and just, you know, to more, I get, give you more historical perspective as to what is the best way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Then I will close the second public session. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be Tuesday next week, May 19. It will begin at 5:15 here at the high school. We will open the meeting and then immediately go into closed session for purposes of interviewing candidates for the superintendent's position. I would move that we adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Meeting adjourned.
Yes, the meeting is adjourned.